As many of you know, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the good work of our incredible public safety teams. As many of you have heard, there was a close call at former Rockwood Golf Course last week. Due to the quick action of our citizens, police, fire, what would have been a tragedy was fortunately avoided. Thank you, you're the best. I know all of us joined together in wishing the family well and thanking those officers, those firefighters, that were there when they were needed most. Also, another kind of bullet point or idea, over the last few years, there have been many conversations about the Independence Center and the safety concerns of the mall. The city has proactively worked with the ownership of the mall to address many of these concerns, and the partnership developed has made significant improvements. I want to make sure that everyone knows we understand this work isn't done, and I'm excited to say that we have met with the new ownership team recently to begin discussing more that can be done in order to ensure the mall continues to be a safe place, welcoming place for visitors and our residents to enjoy for years to come. I look forward to working with my colleagues, the Police Department, the mall management, and members of our community as this conversation continues. If you have any ideas or suggestions, please feel to reach out to all of us. We know how important it is for this venue to be successful and continue to be a focal point in our community. And it's so important as an economic perspective and a destination of choice in our region. So with that, I just wanted to make those quick announcements. Welcome to the City Council Meeting on October 3, 2022. And our invocation will be provided by Ken Truex, is that right? If I pronounced it correctly. Ken Truex, Elder at the East Independence Church of Christ, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Would you pray with me, please? Our Father, I want to thank you for who you are and how you've blessed us. I want to thank you for the country we live in and the city we live in. Father, tonight, I want to pray for the City Council, for their deliberations and decisions that they will make tonight. I pray for the city's senior staff, for the public safety and first responders that we just talked about, for all the employees and volunteers of the city as they go about their responsibilities and as they serve all of us. Finally, Father, I want to thank you and ask your special blessings on those that are struggling at this time, those that are grieving, those with serious health problems, those with serious other problems. Be with all of those folks in special ways, Father. So, Lord, ask your blessings on all of these things, and it's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spheres.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. All right, next on the agenda is citizens' request. I want to give an update on some things that people might be here to talk about. We have pulled the portion of the resolution that would move the citizens' request to the end. It shows that the process has in fact worked. People have reached out to us and said they would like to keep it at the front of the agenda, so that's what we're going to do. If you still want to talk about that, you certainly may, but I just want to let you, all of you, know that that has been pulled and it will not be done. So just wanted to let you all know that, that we will keep it as it is. So with that being said, please come forward, make sure that we talk about policies, not politics or personalities, that we in fact talk about the issues like flooding or street repair or things like that. And with that being said... Yep, and can we have a motion to suspend the rules, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Okay. The first person that would like to talk is Chad McGregor. Chad, would you come forward, please state your name and your address, and you have five minutes for your presentation.
Chad McGregor, 1706 Northwest Cottonwood Circle. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager and staff. My name is Chad McGregor. I am a former 15-year city employee for the city. I currently work as a business representative with IBW Local 53. Our cause is the cause of human justice, human rights, human security. There's a place in IBW for working people of every race and gender, every religion, sexual orientation, and every background. My local currently represents approximately 30% of the employees working within the city of Independence, working towards providing fair wages, benefits, and a safe work environment. There's nothing new about seeking to represent the voiceless and unrepresented. The IBW has long stood for solidarity, equality, and against oppression of any kind. We were recently contacted by some staff members in regards to becoming organized members of IBW Local 53, and I am here to extend that offer to the rest of you as well. Please feel free to contact me at any time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Tara Cruz, Tara, please come forward and state your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tara Cruzey. I live in Sycamore Hills. This is about the... It's somewhat about moving the members' comments to the end of the meeting, but it's about the meetings in general. Good evening, City Council. Took me several hours to write what I want to say. The citizens get up to speak so we are heard. The job of each council member is to represent the people, not just in their district, but to work together for the good of all of the citizens in Independence. How can you possibly do that if you don't listen to the citizens? By moving the comments to the end of the meeting, we are being silenced. Usually, we get up to be heard on what is on the agenda, and by moving that to the end is saying that you don't really care about what we have to say or how we feel about what you are voting on, on our behalf. We have already been told that we can't support a speaker by clapping for them. The only time we are allowed to applaud something is when we are told we can't. The way that feels is that if we disagree, then we need to sit down and shut up. We were told that if it isn't about policy and procedure, we need to call our councilmen or take it to Facebook. I know of several calls to councilmen that have gone completely ignored and unanswered, and shouldn't the main policy and procedure be listening to the people who elected you? What is voted on and discussed at City Council meetings affects us. You can't expect us to shut up when what you are voting on directly affects us. I don't live in a fantasy world where I expect things to always go my way, but I do expect as a taxpaying citizen of Independence to be heard. There has already been one elected council member silenced, which silenced his whole district. The rest of you are one vote away from the same fate. I ask you to vote no on this before your voices also silenced.
Tara, please forgive me, it is Cruzey, is that correct?
Yes.
And I mispronounced your name, so please forgive me. Thank you very much. Mike Talcott, please state your name, your address, and your reason for speaking.
You've already dealt with yours.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lee Phillips, please come forward and state your name and your address, please.
Thank you. I did bring copies of my speech. May I present those to you?
Sure.
For you all.
Just hand it to us and we'll pass them down.
Thank you kindly.
You bet, we'll make it easy for you.
Appreciate it.
And we'll just give you just a moment. We won't start the timer until everybody gets a copy, is that okay?
Thank you.
So just give us a moment, somebody gets a copy, that'd be great. Can you pass that down to... Is there enough for the city manager? Nope.
Did I bring enough?
We're there, and please proceed.
Thank you, sir. My name is Lee. For the record, my last name is Phillips. I live at 1423 South Maywood Avenue, Independence, Missouri 64052. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and distinguished councilmembers, for your valuable time. My husband and I have owned our home on Maywood Avenue since August 2007, and we are both longtime residents of Independence. Tonight, I rise representing myself, my husband, and my affected neighbors in opposition to the approval of Case 22-400-09. It is an application to use the property located at 1430 South Maywood Avenue as an Airbnb. This application was made by Ms. April Preston. My affected neighbors, family, and friends have joined me tonight. I hold copies of seven notarized protests from affected homeowners who oppose this Airbnb. The original protests were filed with City Hall on Thursday, September 22, 2022, and submitted to the Planning Commission on Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we oppose this Airbnb approval. It brings uncertainty and mistrust as an influx of transient visitors constantly come and go. The traffic and parking is an issue when a renter arrives in one car, winds up inviting friends over, or plans a gathering of 20 people for dinner and drinks. All in an instant, there are four or five cars parked facing south on Maywood, and two on the opposite side of the street facing north on Maywood. Noise, parties, drugs, and the fact that our kids' bus stop is right there on the corner are just some of our concerns. On any given day, the kids can hop on the bus in the morning while watching renters move out and return that same afternoon to witness a new renter hauling in groceries and a high chair. Although this home currently has a full-time renter in the upstairs apartment and the management office is just down the street in Inglewood, there is no way that the management company is open to 24-hour calls to handle things. There are just too many variables that could lead to unfortunate circumstances, and we respectfully ask for your no vote on this Airbnb application. We, as homeowners and neighbors, have worked together to remove streetwalkers, homeless squatters, drug dealers, and sex offenders out of our neighborhood. Maywood Avenue is a community of trust, and we all have very similar values. We watch each other's backs and are concerned for the safety of our properties, our lives, and our inalienable right to peace in our own homes. This Airbnb definitely disrupts our neighborhood's right to peace. We again respectfully ask for your no vote on this Airbnb application. Distinguished members of this council, there is one other thing that bothers me and my affected neighbors. According to a citywide housing study done in January of this year, the city of Independence is short on long-term available housing and long on people looking to live here long-term. New jobs are on the horizon, and the demand for housing is pointed out in this study. On page 19, it states that our city's job force is growing. This is amazing and positive news indeed. On that same page, it also states, and I quote, "As the more affordable suburb to major regional employment areas, Independence remains an attractive city to move to for those workers," end quote. The study also points out that short-term rental approvals should be limited so as not to deplete what little available housing remains in town. What that means to me as a layman is that we do not have enough housing for all these amazing mid- and to moderate-income families coming in to take these crucial jobs, which is it that the city wants? More available housing for long-term citizens of Independence or outsiders coming in to take all the currently good or easy-to-rehab properties and turning them into revolving doors for short-term strangers while investors offer no true commitment to the neighborhood they are pilfering from? In 2021, the Planning Committee recommended approval of six short-term rental applications. This removed six possibilities of long-term rental or purchasing opportunities. None were denied. In 2022, after the housing study was completed, the Planning Committee has recommended approval for eight short-term rental applications so far. Here's the breakdown.
You have one minute.
Thank you. A three-bedroom, one-bath on .28 acres in Sycamore Hills, a two-bedroom, one-bath on .42 acres off of Denton Road, a small apartment above a business in Independence Square, a three-bedroom, one-bath on 10,800 square foot lot, a two-bedroom, two-bath, a three-bedroom, one-bath, and the final recommendation is for the approval of a four-bedroom, three-bath located at Maywood Avenue. Again, no application was denied. I would make one observation, it appears that there are no limitations regarding approval to short-term rentals, as the housing study suggests there should be. In conclusion, Honorable Chair and members of the council, on Maywood Avenue and throughout our neighborhood, we prefer to have long-term families who want to be woven into the fabric of our already existing community. I have presented you with seven notarized protests from over 25% of the affected properties. Tonight, I and my affected neighbors have legally protested and spoken. We vote no on the approval of the property at 1430 South Maywood Avenue to be as used as a short-term rental, and we respectfully ask for your no vote. Excuse me, voting no is not only a win for the City of Independence Housing Plan, but also a win for our community. Why not start here? Vote no on the Airbnb. Let's invest in and rebuild the northwest side of Independence with long-term family housing in mind. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you. Lee, well done, and...
Thank you.
Do you have some time after the council meeting? I would love to talk to you further about this topic.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I would, I just love to speak to you, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your preparation.
Thank you kindly.
Appreciate it.
I beg your pardon. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Sorenson. Please state your address and your reason for being here. You can take your time, and we'll wait for Lee to...
I'm okay.
You're okay?
Yeah. It's gonna be short.
I just want you to be comfortable.
Okay. Bob Sorenson, 800 Southwest Powell Drive, Oak Grove, Missouri. I'm the president of the Loggers Retiree Group of the City of Independence. I had signed up to speak in regards to the resolution that you have pulled from the agenda, and I appreciate that you have pulled this. I still am very confused and do not understand how that ever even got presented. As you stated, the way it works now is working well, as the people have spoke before me. You want to speak before an item's voted on, not after an item's voted on, and I'm hopefully, we can keep it that way, and I appreciate you taking that and pulling it from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Mr. Nesbit, go ahead and come forward. Please state your name and your address.
Edward Butch, Nesbit, 3817 South Milton Drive. I ask you guys a question here. If you own a property as a business, who is responsible to take care of the curbs, the sidewalks, and entry? I ask you guys that. It's the owner's responsibility. So I see here we got bill number 22-094, an ordinance going in to do work at Lynn Court and Nolan. I ask you this, I've been talking to you guys months about this project. It is not a reasonable project to do. I know everybody says there's going to be, well, at least a couple of councilmembers say there's going to be a hotel put there. They guaranteed it. So my problem is, is how are they guaranteeing that there's going to be a hotel put there if there's nothing been in there right now, especially since there's still lawsuits and things going on about the property? So I don't understand that. So why are we going ahead and spending $90,000 on this to get diagrams and stuff drawn up? This is a, I told you about it two weeks ago, capital improvement project. I said, why don't we switch this capital improvement project to the other capital improvement project? Make it, get it done first, put this on the back burner. The problem is, now that you guys have already set an ordinance for this, I think it's illegal. Basically, you're going to use taxpayers' money from the street tax to do this project, and this is for eminent domain stuff and also drawings, which I think is not proper to use the taxpayer's money on. So I'm trying to figure out what is going on. Nobody's giving me any answers. I've talked to several councilmembers about this, talked to you, Mayor, nobody's giving any answers. Does anybody know any answers about it? Or is this all a backdoor, something gone behind the scenes because it was done two or three years ago? I mean, you're new to it, a couple other ones here are new to it, what's going on? Nobody's giving me any answer. Is anybody having answers? Do you know, Mayor? No?
This is your time, my friend.
Okay, my time, okay. So basically, what I'm saying, if this passes, I guess I'll have to go to the press, because I sat on the Street Advisory Commission, and basically, I did not, I tried to pull this from the Street Advisory Commission on their program, but they would not let me do that. They said, that's nothing we could do. You say you got to do it to the council. So I've talked to you guys for months about this, nobody's ever pulled it from the council. So that's what I'm saying, it's illegal to use taxpayer money to do this project that's on private property. So you cannot do that on private property. Now you go do eminent domain, yes, it will not be private property, it'll be the city's property. That's what I'm saying, this is an illegal project. You guys need to think about this before you vote on it. You better be voting it down, is what I'm saying. We have other projects out there that are doing the same thing, fixing sidewalks and areas that the owners should be doing, not the taxpayers. I mean, it's all part of that, I don't know what I want to say, it's all part of different projects going around, street improvement projects that are taxpayers' money, but really, you can't spend it on sidewalks and curbs, you're supposed to be for streets, okay? Appreciate it, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Nesbit.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know this is just a little bit out of term, but would you, in the council, grant me an opportunity to respond to Mr. Nesbit's accusations of not being responded back to?
Yep. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the counsel. Mr. Nesbit, I do appreciate your comments and your concerns, more specifically, you and I had a good conversation after the last council meeting that we had. So I did give you your answers, and your answers were, the answer that I gave you was, you're wrong. So please don't come up here and say that no one's responded to you, because we had a great conversation, and your understanding of funding mechanisms between one pool of money, stormwater, street money was completely different and incorrect, and I tried to explain that to you. So please don't come up here and say that we haven't responded to you, nobody's responded back to you, because I did personally to you two weeks ago.
Yeah, you said a long guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You guys have the power. No, you guys, okay, let me come back up to you in a minute.
How much time do we have left? You've got two minutes, so...
Okay, John, you say I'm wrong at this, but you guys have the power that you can override it and do that. That's why, that is not wrong. You guys have the power to do that, as the council. That's why it's not wrong. Understand? I guess not. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, we're going to stop this, this is going to be the last time, but I'll let you proceed.
Nesbit, I'd be more than happy to speak with you again afterward, because you were very incorrect, and I gave you the information to where you could not be incorrect.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Huff, please come forward, state your name and...
I want to come up here at this point, Mike Huff, 16501 East George Franklin Drive. I want to start off, I keep hearing this, there's no, you can't manage a secret in Independence. Well, I'm having a hard time believing that. And the reason why I'm saying that is that I got this report from the, from this private investigator up here, that talked about how it was all miscommunication within the city and everything else, and then a couple days later, I see something on Channel 4 that's completely opposite of what this investigator had to say. So I'm just wondering how we manage in that secret? We had an ethics charge against a council member the other day, like two weeks ago. No response from this council, mayor, or the Ethics Commission. Do we have a secret there? My third and final thing is, is that, oh, a couple, like last October, myself and a couple councilmembers were called out on the city manager's contract, his employment contract. And it's, it was for not filing out a performance review. I think some people can probably recall that, and it was an illegal one at that. Now September comes and gone. So I would like to know if you guys did a review on the city manager, or does he get an automatic two-year contract here? I think we owe it to our city manager to have a review for him annually, just so he knows where he stands, nothing against him whatsoever. But not reviewing his contract, and I have his contract right here, 2016, in fact, there's a member up on this council that signed this thing, so I'm sure that he knows exactly what's in this thing, but by reviewing his contract, it calls for, you know, for his annual review, and by not doing this annual review, you put the city in jeopardy for a lawsuit by the city manager. What I'm wanting to know is, when will you be responsible to the people? Perhaps these trips and cruises should have been worked around to do the responsible thing. Thank you.
Mr. Huff, when you were on the City Council, did you complete his application and complete the review when you were there?
Did I complete his, his review asked for an annual, it's right here, I'm sure you guys all seen this thing.
Yeah.
You're on the City Council, but this, what this says is, you will give him a verbal, between all of you, in a verbal setting.
Right.
So that he knows where he stands.
Absolutely, I agree.
And someone called me out and said, I didn't do a written one. Written is not in his contract. It's right here. I'm sure he's aware of this because he signed it.
Okay. You answered my question.
Thank you.
You did not do a written review, and that's what I asked. Go ahead, state your point of order, please.
Well, being one of the councilmembers who was called out last year, the attention was brought on a review form that was distributed in October of last year. His contract specifically calls for an annual review by the entire council in executive session on his anniversary, which is September. I've met with councilmembers, the new ones here, and I have asked you to please review the contract and give him the courtesy of living up to the contract that we have with him in this city. By not doing so, since 2016, we are opening ourselves up to tremendous liability, and I've had this discussion with the new folks on the council about this, and I did not appreciate the fact that we were called out and maligned for not filling out a review form that has nothing to do with that contract.
Mr. Councilmember...
I have the floor right now, and I would like to finish.
Mr. Councilmember, the question was, you asked for a point of order. Can you state your point of order, please?
Yes, I'm trying to clarify a question that you asked him, that was asked to me and another council member that's seated right now, and I want to clarify, that was, it's, the question is irrelevant. It was not part of his contract, if you read it, you understand.
We'll proceed then, if the question's irrelevant, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
Next, Mr. Love, would you like to come forward? Mr. Love, please state your name, your address, and please proceed.
Kenneth Love, 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, Missouri. Before I start my speech tonight, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to thank the residents that have taken their time out to be here tonight to speak. I would also like to thank out-of-state guests that are visiting, that are sitting here tonight to listen. And I didn't like the part of some unprofessionalism, but we'll get over it and we'll move on. City Council, I'm here to talk about dangerous buildings. Since a dangerous building located at 4023 South Nolan Road has been on hold through the court system because of the way Royal Law Service became the owner, this has come to my attention, and I printed on my own eight pages. At the top of this eight pages, each page states, "Dangerous Buildings Report, August 2022." Seems like the city has a lot of money. We had enough money that we was willingly to go forward and tearing down 4023 South Nolan Road. For an example, what about the burnt-out houses? What about the buildings that are covered in weeds that you can't even see no more because the city doesn't take care of the property or force or take eminent domain of these properties? What am I talking about? Here's a perfect example, in District 1. 600 North Liberty, that's old St. Mary's Church. Here's another one. And I'm only picking out certain properties, and I've been riding all over the city the whole weekend, and I even took one of the guests that are here to show us our city and what we're not doing. and what we're not doing. 2604 South Crystal Avenue. What is this place? I'm sure some council people know what it is. Where I'm going with this is, if we have money to just fork over to destroy a Kmart building, that I feel the owner's responsibility to take care of it. But let's not forget, before I end my conversation tonight on dangerous buildings, let's not forget off the beaten path over in District One. Off the beaten path, there are buildings that are on the ground, weeds taller than me, homeless in these buildings. But the police are not being called to remove them out of those buildings. The city's not going over there cutting the grass or the weeds down. Same thing with some other properties. If we're going to address dangerous buildings as hard as we have been after 4023 South Nolan Road, we as a city needs to address each and every one that's on this list. So I'll, before I walk away, I'm gonna make it very easy for our city manager, so he doesn't have to work so hard and forget, here is a color copy.
I get that electronically every month. You can keep your copy.
You, you, I have a copy. You have been handed and given a certified copy from the City of Independence that is colored. So it makes it real easy not to forget which properties is on that list. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
What's wrong with sir?
Uh, let's see, anybody else? Okay. Uh, the next thing is a presentation resolution, if I am correct. And, uh, I've got something to read here. Yeah, that works.
Bill number 22-813, a resolution recognizing Cheryl DeHaan, Recreation Services Supervisor Two with the Parks Recreation and Tourism Department as the I-Star Award recipient for October 2022.
Thank you. Um, and are you gonna read the resolution? Uh, do I have a motion in a second?
Yes, so moved.
So moved. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. Um, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Okay. Um, I'm very honored to, uh, submit this today, the I-Star. You'll be the first person to receive the I-Star Award. Our Employee of the Month program has been renamed to recognize specific acts of service. Our first I-Star Independence Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award recipient is Cheryl DeHane. Nice of the correct, right, DeHane? DeHaan? DeHaan? Thank you, Cheryl. A recreational services supervisor, too, is recognized for your actions on September 6th, 2022. A citizen, a citizen was playing pickleball at Palmer, Palmer Center and collapsed. Several players and employees jumped into action to provide life-saving support. Cheryl was able to get the AED unit out and used it before fire and AMR staff arrived. Independence Fire Personnel responded with this alarm from Pumper One C-Shift, Captain Josh Carrick, FEO Ryan Waters, and firefighter Wes Elliott. Captain Josh Carrick, or excuse me, the AMR personnel were paramedic Heather's, excuse me, a paramedic, Heather Bender, and EMT Kirby Ritter. We were advised that the gentlemen spent a short time in the hospital, and now to all of your efforts is at home. Cheryl joins the PRT in November of 2017 as the Palmer Center Facility and Program Supervisor. Every day Cheryl is an example to those that she works with and the population at Palmer Center that she serves of a person of high dedication and high standards. She is a leader and doesn't hesitate to tackle tough jobs, and in this one right here is an example of that. This was evident with her quick efforts and quick actions to become part of a team of participants working to save a gentleman's life. So with that, Cheryl, congratulations, and we'll come up and give you the award. Congratulations. We've got a resolution, and the city manager also has your star recognition. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Whereas the City of Independence is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Whereas some home fires, excuse me, whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association. Whereas smoke alarms sense, scent smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas Independence residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond. Whereas Independence residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas the men and women of the Independence Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively serves to remind the citizens of Independence it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence, hereby proclaims October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week.
And if I'm correct, Madam City Clerk, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Very good. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion or items to be pulled? All right. Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that brings us to, uh, resolutions.
Public hearings.
Oh, public hearings, excuse me. And we'll go ahead and open the first public hearing.
A public hearing for the application received from Valley Plaza LLC for the retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink for Nirvana Coffee Shop and Lounge located at 10707 East Winter Road. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skennell. I'm the Community Development Director. Nirvana Coffee Shop and Lounge seeks this liquor license for the retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink. They opened a small coffee shop in Game Lounge in 2021, located along Winter Road in the Inglewood Arts District. This, this business intends to expand their menu, uh, to offer alcoholic drinks Monday through Saturday. There are a couple churches with, in residentially zoned property within 300 feet, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Mr. Mayor?
Anyone else here to talk about this liquor license application? Anyone else here to talk about the liquor license application for Nirvana Coffee Shop? No one else? Close public hearing.
Council actions requested regarding the application received from Valley Plaza LLC for the retail selling intoxicating liquor by the drink for Nirvana Coffee Shop and Lounge located at 10707 East Winter Road.
Go ahead, open the public hearing. Okay. Any discussion with anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just a question, confirmation, a question from Mr. Skennell. Just confirmation that none of the churches there locally to that property have registered any complaint. Is that correct?
We have not heard any, uh, calls or complaints from, uh, any of the people who were notified.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Uh, I'd like to ask, uh, Councilmember Perkins a quick question. Have you received any complaints or objections about this application?
I have not.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. We'll open this public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
A full public hearing for the application received from JJSW LLC, DBA Spirit World, submitted an application for retail selling of intoxicating liquor and the original package licenses for Spirit World Store located at 17001 East US 24 Highway. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tom Skennell, Community Development Director. Uh, Spirit World seeks this liquor license for the retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package. Uh, Spirit World has been in business, uh, along 24 Highway for more than 15 years. This business is relocating from, uh, their old location, about a quarter mile back to the west to their new location. They will continue the same operations as they have operated for, uh, over 15 years. Uh, there is residentially zoned property within 300 feet, so that requires, uh, City Council approval, and I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else here to talk on this item?
Mayor?
Please proceed.
My name is Jeffrey Elliott, owner of Spirit World.
Okay.
On 17023 East 24 Highway. That license has been there over 45 years. We've had the store about 18, and we're gonna move that store up the street about three and a half blocks, same side, up next to Little Caesar's. Bigger space, better location for us. That, that's our plan. So we were asked, we applied for a license. We did that, and that's where we are today.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion or anyone else to want to testify at public hearing? No other discussion? I'll close the public hearing.
Council action is requested regarding the application received from JJSW LLC, DBA Spirit World, submitted an application for retail selling of intoxicating liquor and the original package licenses for Spirit World Store located at 17001 East US 24 Highway.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Uh, Councilmember Stewart, uh, have you received any, if you don't mind answering, have you received any objections or comments about this?
Uh, no, I have not.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Okay. We have one more public hearing.
A public hearing regarding the taxable industrial development revenue bonds for the Eastgate Commerce Center Phase One Project. Full public hearing.
Good evening. Uh, North Point seeks approval of, uh, this Chapter 100 for the first phase. Uh, this is for buildings A2 and A3 of the Eastgate Commerce Center development. Uh, these buildings are located along Little Blue Parkway, kind of north and east of Necessary Road. Uh, the total square footage of these two buildings is approximately 571,000 square feet. Um, earlier this year, the City Council approved the development agreement with North Point that set out the framework for, uh, the Chapter 100 tax abatement and the Community Improvement District for the reimbursement of public infrastructure costs in connection with the Eastgate Commerce Center Development Project. Uh, the Chapter 100 structure will result in tax abatement for the project beginning in, uh, 2022 and continuing through 2020, 2043, so 20 years. Uh, in each of the attack, uh, tax abatement years, uh, pilot or payment in lieu of tax will, uh, be due on the, the project. It is a variable pilot that is paid by the developer, um, and it starts out at 14 cents in year one and goes up to a dollar and one cent in year 20. Uh, this transaction would also provide a sales tax exemption for construction materials used in this project. This Chapter 100 is in performance with the approved development agreement. Uh, we do have, um, the city's bond council from Gilmore Bell, as well as the applicant's, uh, attorney is here as well, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Anyone else want to discuss or come forward? Please proceed.
Ed Reneth with 3817 South Milton Road Drive. Okay, when this came up before the planning commission, I asked this developer specifically if they were gonna do tax increment financing. They said, "No." I don't understand how it got approved. I disagree with what's going on. If they want to build it, use their own money. Why are they using taxpayers' money? I think that's wrong. I mean, that is not what, and they said they, they would pay for the infrastructure repairs and all that when it came up before the plan. I asked them specifically these questions. So I think this is wrong that we approved this. So I'm just saying, that's what I think. Because I did ask it at the planning mission when it was there. So, but I also did get turned down by the attorney, so that's another thing.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit. Anyone else? Any further discussion?
Close hearing.
Close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. City Manager, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if it would be, um, the pleasure of the council, our representative from our bond council, uh, at Gilmore Bell, David Martin, is here, and, um, I think it would be helpful to clear up some of the information that was shared during the public hearing.
Okay.
Why the gentleman's walking forward? Uh, I believe, more specifically, can you answer within your conversation with us about tax increment financing? I've heard that again, and I'm wanting to make sure that, that was not part of the financial package that, that we had looked at.
Certainly. Uh, David Martin, Gilmore and Bell, uh, he serves as bond and economic development council to the city. So there's a distinction between tax increment financing and what's happening in this transaction. This is a tax abatement transaction, so what it does is it reduces the tax burden that would be paid on an ongoing basis by the owner of property. Tax increment financing's a little different. What it does is it captures taxes that are paid, or a portion thereof, over time, and allows those revenues to be redirected to payment of project costs. So we're talking about abatement here as opposed to tax. So we're talking about abatement here as opposed to tax capture. The other component of this is CID, and they essentially are taxing themselves with a special assessment, and that's going to pay for public improvements of street and utility nature. And then, to the extent that they have sales tax generation, which could be by virtue of some retail restaurant to service the general area, and then potentially businesses, certain distribution businesses are taxed at their business location for situs of sale as opposed to the delivery location. So if they were to attract business of that nature, it would also pay sales tax to that CID.
Go ahead. Go ahead. That clarifies.
I have a question.
Please proceed.
So I, is the city on the property in any way? We listed as owners of the property in any way?
In order to effectuate the tax abatement, the city, while it is not now, will have to take legal title to the property. That's what removes the title from the tax rolls and creates 100% exemption. Then the payment in lieu of taxes that Tom was talking about that are calculated based off square footage, those are paid to the city instead of paying tax to the county. That's just how the statute functions, and the city then distributes those taxes in the same manner, or those payments in lieu of taxes, in the same manner as taxes would be distributed to the taxing jurisdictions.
Okay. So if North Point defaults using the Chapter 100 bonds, how does the state recoup the money? They come after us?
So this type of bonds is what we refer to as buy-your-own-bonds. They're sold to the company itself, so the company owes essentially itself an obligation to make those payments. There is no situation in which a political subdivision, including the city, would ever be on the line for a debt service payment under that bond structure.
Okay, so they default, Missouri, they're gone, so how does Missouri recoup the loss?
So if they were to default under the bond documents, they really don't have the ability to default on debt service since it's owed to themselves. It's typically marked off by the bond trustee. So the debt service component of the transaction is not meant to finance the project. It doesn't produce financing for the project, and so it doesn't produce an obligation that anyone would ever have to repay. It's the rest of the transaction that follows the statute that we're focusing on, and the real purpose is to create the tax abatement. So a default would be, that is actually, you know, potentially could happen, would be if they didn't pay the payments in lieu of tax, in which case the city would have the ability to unravel the transaction, put the title back into the hands of the company, which would put it back on the tax rolls. And so the ultimate penalty for a failure to make a payment is you wipe out the transaction and the project becomes taxable.
So what does that do to, let's say, revenues to the school district? What happens to those revenues?
So in that case, the revenues would be increased because the following year it would go on the tax roll and the abatement would have been terminated.
So we do hold some obligation to it at some point, if they default, the city?
No, this, again, the city-
Because we're listed on the property, right?
So the city doesn't pay tax on the property that it owns, so you would never be liable for a tax payment.
Right.
The only liability that the city would have would be if you took in the payments in lieu of tax from the company and then failed to distribute them properly to the taxing jurisdictions.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that when I met with North Point, I asked specifically if there was any, going to be any, tax-related financing, and I was told no. And so this, this is kind of a shock to me that they're going this route, so. So if the city's name's on the deed, I don't know how that'll work, but I don't think the bonds just disappear with the state if they default. I worry that the city will end up somewhere having some liability.
With, so with respect to the bonds, the city is, under the indenture in the lease, only obligated to transfer lease payments that are related to the debt service to the bond trustee, which then gets paid back to the company as the bondholder. So in terms of liability for indebtedness, it is not possible for the city to incur liability in this circumstance. The biggest concern for municipal liability would be if something were to happen on the property and the city were to be joined in a lawsuit, and that's the reason we have provisions in the lease that say that the company has to carry insurance that covers the city in that circumstance and also indemnify the city where that's to occur. So that's the liability that we're trying to protect against. The documents simply don't provide an avenue to where the city would ever be liable for any borrowed funds, and in fact, there aren't any borrowed funds through the bond structure.
Okay, well, I guess I would have to look at it a little closer, but, you know, I have concerns about just the city being on the deed, right? We're listed as part-owner, having no obligation at all if they default.
Well, again, I understand the concern, but the documents are specifically set up to where, under the bond documents, you will never have that type of liability, and anything that comes on to the property with respect to loan documents for their project financing, the city never signs anything that would put the city at risk for a failure to pay that the developer fails to make a payment. The city is never on the line for any of those payments.
That's good, because my district is on the line for about $90 million in TIF, and I just don't want to see any more liability put out there.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a significant contrast from some of the city's TIF transactions where the city did agree to make annual appropriations in the case of a shortfall. This is just a completely different type of transaction. That type of liability does not exist here.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. Martin, thank you for being here. Can you very briefly, in as simple terms as possible, explain what a Chapter 100 abatement is and what the function of it is supposed to be for a local government?
Sure. So Chapter 100 was enacted to give cities and counties the ability to undertake these industrial development projects and provide tax abatement to the companies that are constructing and operating the projects. And so the way it's set that up allowed cities to do one of two things. One, which is actually finance and own the project as the beneficial owner and lease it to a company. In that circumstance, a city would have a realistic payment obligation on the bonds, and Mr. Steinmeier's concerns would be merited in that avenue because they would have been intended to finance the project. So what has developed out of Chapter 100 over the years is cities really did not want that level of involvement in these projects. They wanted to be able to use just the tax abatement tool in order to attract development. And so that's why the buy-your-own-bond structure developed, where the ultimate obligor is the company to which the project is being leased. And then the payment obligation flows through the city, like I was talking about earlier with the lease payments that are tied to the debt service, through the city and the bond trustee, back to the company as bondholder. So that structure allows for two things. One, just complying with the statute on how it's supposed to be set up, and two, that debt service payment, the principal amount of the bonds and the interest that's being paid through that structure by the company serves to eliminate the bonus value argument that sweetheart lease would be issued in the favor of the company while the taxpayers were taking the burden of actually paying for property. So that's not what's happening here. The company makes all the payments, typically has separate financing to finance the project, so it's not coming out of the taxpayers' wallet, and it allows that scenario where we don't have liability or potential liability on the part of the city.
And just so we're clear, this is not a TIF. This is nothing like, you're very familiar with Bass Pro, this is nothing like that.
That's correct. So in this circumstance, we're not capturing public funds and applying them to a debt, which is then, I don't want to say guaranteed, but annually appropriation backed by the city. That's what we have in Bass Pro, and that's why the city has in the past made payments on those bonds, and that is simply not this scenario. We're abating taxes, we are not creating a situation in which the city is backing any obligation for borrowed money.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just real quickly, in general, the financing package and how it's brought us to this conversation was something that was brought up with our incentive committee, and they went through with all of the taxing jurisdictions and discussed the pros and cons and had the questions that were presented to them as kind of an advisory committee to the City Council. So this has already been through a round of discussion and points and counterpoints. So I appreciate your additional information and clarification that you've given to us
And I would just like to state that I agree with Councilmember Steinmeier completely and absolutely. Your concerns are, this is not a TIF, and I completely and absolutely agree with you, sir, that that's a great concern with this project, and I appreciate your questions and your guidance on this, so thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Any further questions? All right. Any further questions from members of the council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please. Okay. So now we're going to non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-816, a resolution emitting Section 6 ordinances, resolutions, and motions of the council rules of procedure.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm going to amend this to strike the citizen request, item A, communications and personal appearances of citizens before the council. Move to strike that, which will essentially leave it where it is in the, at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion on striking this item? Any discussion on striking this item? Okay. I would just like to say that democracy works. We heard you loud and clear long before the council meeting tonight. Just reach out to us, we can have a discussion. We don't have to use this room to talk about things. I have a phone, I have an email, please talk to me, we heard you, and that's why we're taking this action. So I understand that people like to have the opportunity to talk, we want to continue to grant that opportunity, but democracy can be carried out in many, many different ways by working together and having discussions well before the item comes before the council. So anyway, I just wanted to make that statement. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll have another amendment to make on a separate section, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Any further discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
On Section 6.5-
Okay.
Or at least paragraph, line item 6.5, publication of action items, I would like to amend that language, and the meaningful amendment would be to scratch out the at least 24 hours, weekends excluded, and that would, so that would be scratched out, no later than, and then it would read this way, no later than 5:00 PM two Fridays prior to the next regular meeting. In other words, instead of going the Tuesday prior to the meeting, we would actually be moving it further back, so it would roughly be 10 days.
Okay.
I'll let the council members know that I have discussed this thoroughly and also with the city manager, and that he says that's a doable timeframe for him.
I'll second that.
So we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, if this is doable for you, explain to me how it'll work if something comes up at the last minute and you need to put it on there.
There won't be any last-minute items.
I know that it's been mentioned before that you guys, a lot of times, are struggling to get something on at the last minute. There's negotiations that go on and different stuff, you know, and, I mean, is this true? Are you truly going to make this work?
I think we'll probably have to work through trial and error here. I mean, for example, the Staywell item that we worked on a month ago was worked on until that Thursday morning and then brought to the council that very next Monday. I think we're going to have to rework our planning commission agenda such that we factor in these timelines. So it's going to take a modification of the way we do business to make this work, but I'm not saying we can't adjust. I mean, as I've always said, we work for the council, we'll make the will of the council work.
Is this going to inconvenience you?
There's, I don't want this to sound argumentative, but I really don't have the luxury of deciding what's inconvenient. I work at the will of the council, and we make that work.
Okay. I'm not going to be supporting this. I mean, I appreciate you removing the previous item as far as the council member, or the citizens' comments. I'm still not going to support this, just for the fact that I think it puts too much strain on him and his staff to have it the Tuesday before. I mean, we already changed this once to Thursday, you know, we went back, and, you know, there are things that come up at the last minute, you know, that need to be put on, and even for council-sponsored items, you know? If one of us once needs to put something on at the last minute, we don't have the ability to do it. I think it's just going to cause more problems than it's worth. I don't really understand why we're doing this, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, could I ask you a question, or if you like?
Yeah.
Would you like to work with me in case there were, in fact, an emergency and have a process for that? I'm happy to include a process into that. I think you've got a valid point, and if you would come and make a proposal to us, let's talk about it. We've done that before in other items. You've worked with us well in that regard, and happy to do that again in this situation.
I mean, if you had, I don't know what, I would have to think about it. I mean, I'd be willing to work with you, I just, I don't like it as it is right now.
So your preference is to keep it as it is and not move it back?
I guess if we had something in place to be able to put something on at the last minute, sure. I mean, state law says it has to be published 24 hours.
Right.
Business days. I don't know why we can't stay with that. I don't really understand the need to do this, but I guess it would be better if there was something, if the city manager or a council member had something at the last minute that needed to put on. If there was a possibility that it could be added, I guess I would be all right with that. So, I mean, I'd be willing to work with you on it, I guess.
Yeah. Please bring to us a proposal, and we'll be happy to work with you, because I agree there may in fact be times when there's an emergency needed. So, be happy to work with you on that. Anyone else? Other further discussion?
Do you have a question? Didn't we discuss this to some degree when we had our annual council meeting?
The, for a better word, the retreat, the full-day program?
Correct.
Yes. Please proceed.
Did we discuss this this morning?
We did.
And did we, did we vote to not move forward with that proposal at that time?
We didn't vote for anything, we just discussed items. If I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, I could be wrong, but I think we just discussed it. There wasn't any votes taken that day.
I thought it was kind of a unanimous at that time. It was unanimous that just leave things as they are. We've had these discussions in the last council. We're not trying to put more pressure on city staff. We're not trying to put more pressure on city staff. We talked about moving it back, forwards. I think what we've got in place works, and I don't have a resounding affirmation from our city manager, whose staff is working hard to try to serve seven or six people now and try to make this work. I'd like to see it remain as it is. I have some struggles with this as well, so I'm not sure why we need to change this. I'm still, I haven't heard a good case for changing it, so.
All right. Anyone, any further discussions? I'll be happy to describe the thought process behind it if no one else wants to proceed on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll briefly.
Yeah, give us your thoughts, and I'll see if I concur.
Thank you, sir. Briefly, what this does is give all of us more time to work on agenda items. Half-business days, we'll have literally a full week to work on the agenda items. So I can't see anything but a benefit to that, just my way of thinking. The second part is, and certainly regarding the city manager's staff, you know, in the legal profession, we constantly think in terms of weeks and months and years, and the practical result of this isn't to force staff to do all one week's worth, work, or three weeks' worth of work to hurry up and get it done at the last minute. It's just that their schedule will change a bit. So if Director Heidi wants to change the, some portion of his regular schedule, regular maintenance, some item, capital improvement, whatever it would happen to be, you know, if he doesn't get it on for that Friday by that, for that council meeting in time, then he simply waits till the next one. And this doesn't affect, so, in other words, they'll just be working ahead a little bit. And I don't think that's a bad thing. In fact, I believe it sticks some more thoughtfulness into the process, because it'll push our directors out theoretically a bit longer. So the next, the next portion is, well, I had one other thing, and I forgot what I was going to say. Then that's what I remember for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? I know there was a question up here on the dais, you know, could we postpone this? I would like to proceed forward, get it done, and then if there needs to be amendments to change how we do the emergency clauses, go from there. I really think it comes down to our definition as a body of what is a city council meeting or what's a town hall? That's what it really comes down to. A town hall is an item where somebody brings something up and says, "Let's discuss it. Let's spitball it. Let's discuss it." In independence, that's been the process. You can put something on the agenda on Friday. It hasn't been vetted. It hasn't been run past the city manager. It hasn't been run past the police department, if in fact they are in favor or need to look at it. It hasn't been run past finance. It hasn't been, there's items when council members can bring things to the agenda, and they have not been vetted. That is where we do committee work or we do study session work, and this body has still not made a decision on, shall we do committee work or study session work? We've got to have a process for running this organization, and this is the first step to making process work. Now, we can bring things, I mean, we can stay the way we were, and people can bring up an agenda item at the last minute that hasn't been ran by anyone, and matter of fact, hasn't been ran by any of us. So really, that's a town hall, and we bring an item up and we discuss it, and it hasn't been vetted, and we vote on it, which I think is, it's disrespectful to everyone here. You want us to run a government that works for you. How can we do that if we haven't had an opportunity to vet the ideas that have been brought before us? That's the discussion. If we want to have a town hall, I'll hold a town hall anytime, anybody asks me once to hold a town hall, I'll have a town hall. We'll have a discussion, and we can throw ideas around. But if we want to have a city council meeting where we actually vote on items, we've got to do this kind of a process. So that's it. The other side of the coin is too, I'm very, very much in favor of a committee structure. There are cities in our area that are very, very successful with how they run their cities. One of them is Lee Summit. They have a number of committees for their, for their city council. That's where you have input from citizens to, in favor of the idea or not in favor of the idea. That's where you have, or a study session, you have people bring items up, and we ask people who are involved with this. Let's say it has a financial implication. Let's say it has an implication on the fire department. Then we want to make sure that both of those directors are well-versed in how this will impact their departments. In my experience in government, and my colleagues that I respect and admire have said to me, the worst thing that we can do is unanticipated consequences. We pass something, we vote on it, we make it an ordinance within our city, and we haven't looked at how this will impact us as an organization, as a city. What are the unintended consequences? An outstanding example of that tonight is the presentation on the Airbnb. That was an extraordinary example of great policy and how to have the discussion in this body about how do we go forward. That was extraordinary, well-researched, great information, great background. That's the kinds of discussions that we have to have as a policy discussion, and so that's what I'm going for in that regard. Do I have two minutes? Is that what you're saying?
Two years.
Two years.
Okay.
Is this a town hall now?
Yeah, but I'm just describing, people wanted to know why we were making this decision, so I'll be happy to conclude, if you would like, but please proceed.
Yeah, just to give the public and those that are present an idea of why I'm voting for this amendment, the very first council meeting after I was sworn in, I got on, sometime after Friday, after 5:00 PM, I got a packet in by email of well over 1,000 pages. It was like 1,050 or 1,080 pages. And to go through that number of pages in a weekend, if you don't have something else going on, or if you do have something else going on, is really difficult, and to do it the justice that it needs to give that kind of, to give it the time that it needs to delve into any questionable situations or to get ahold of anybody in the public that might have concerns about it, is extremely difficult to do in a three-day period unless you don't have anything else going on to do that. And so, so this will lengthen that time, will give us an opportunity to address the concerns, address the, make contact with the public, do those kinds of things, and allow us to do, give it the due diligence that it's really needed to do on some of the agenda items that we need to address. So that's why I'm voting for it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Please proceed.
I just disagree with your analogy to some degree, because, I mean, in the past, in the last couple of years, when we had resolutions that we brought forward or ordinances that need to be reviewed, we took the time to do it. There was no rush to anything. If the city manager, the city councillor wanted others to look at it, and they voiced that, we did that. And the thing is, if we're running it through committees at, like what they do at the state level, I can't count how many state-level bills that go to committee and die, and we never hear anything about it. That's not how this government's set up. And we, you know, so when we talk about committees, who's on the committee? Who's the central power that's going to decide what goes on the agenda and what doesn't? That's my concern. That's not serving you. You can bring me ideas for a resolution, and I can put them on there for you. I can do that, and I would be willing to do that. And then if you felt strongly about it, if it goes to a committee and dies, then you're going to be upset with me because it didn't come out and never made the agenda. So someone's controlling the agenda. It's the wrong approach. Again, priority is you. I'm here to serve you. I'm not here to serve these gentlemen as much as I like them. I'm here to serve you. And that's where I have a problem with this. This is really centralizing power. It's trying to be made to slow it down, but it's really just centralizing to a committee level of what's going to be on an agenda and what's not. And that's the wrong form of government as a charter, and I just, I oppose this. So I'll be voting no.
Mr. City Councillor, if I may, you may or might know the answer to this. Is the city of Lee Summit a charter form of government?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so I think many of us would agree that the city of Lee Summit has functioned as a government very effectively and has listened to its citizens and had been very progressive in how it moves forward and listening to people and getting folks involved. I have grave concerns for an idea being brought up and put on the agenda. And over the weekend, if we want to be respectful to staff, we have to call staff on Saturday and Sunday in order to get that issue resolved or to find that out. Giving this amount of time to an item for consideration and thought, I think, is very, very helpful. Government is not designed to move at a quick pace. So with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the motion carries, I understand. Thank you. Please proceed.
Madam City Clerk, I think, do we need to vote to approve the total measure as amended?
As amended.
Well, we do, but go ahead and state your point of view.
So part of this resolution in 6.4, it doesn't make any sense now that 6.5 has been amended, so 6.4 needs to be amended as well.
I don't know if I have a copy of that in front of me.
Please proceed.
I move to table this till the next council meeting, get all these amendment wording corrected, and so for we don't rush through it and we get a chance to review it.
Are we allowed to do that at this point? I'll second, but I don't know if we're allowed to.
Right, no. According to Robert Solskjaer's order, you can, in the process, make a motion to table it and rewrite it and bring it back up as an item. What we would do, if I'm in agreement and everybody's good with it, and I'd make sure that all of you are happy, is leave the amendments as we have stated. Citizens' requests would stay where they are. The other amendment of putting it on Friday before would be where it's at. And then what you're asking is to put this, to change 6.4 so that it works in regards to the changes we've made in the resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I think I can make an amendment to fix number 6.4.
Well, hold on, we've got a vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, yeah.
Sorry. Currently, you have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Steinmeier and Stewart.
Right. But, but there is, but there is, with regards to that, we can't have debate, if I'm correct. I mean, we can have a debate on the motion on the floor.
The motion to postpone?
Right.
I mean, that's not really debatable.
Okay. Then my recommendation is to decline that, and we'll proceed with the debate and come back to it, and I'm happy to entertain that after we clarify a few things. So, Madam City Clerk, take the roll for postponing it. We'll decline that, come back, debate it, get it straightened out, and then proceed.
Councilmember Spears?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. So it fails because there's no majority.
Motion fails.
Okay, the motion fails. Very good. So we continue to our discussion, going back to fixing 6.4. So, please proceed.
I move to amend item 6.4 on this resolution to state on or before 9:00 AM two Thursdays prior to the agenda publication.
So go ahead and restate that amendment, please, again.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Two Thursdays prior to the meeting, the council meeting for which the agenda is being published. So, because we, we said we were going to change the, the one we just approved was to move it to the two Fridays, so we'll do this one to two Thursdays, which gives to, so that, that takes care of it.
Yep.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to move it, and I'll have the city clerk, please read it again, so we're all on the same page.
So this is a motion to amend 6.4 to be two Thursdays prior to the council meeting, so it would land the council-sponsored items due date the Thursday before the Friday that the agenda is published.
Mr. City Councillor, all right, do you feel comfortable with that, the way that it's written and the way that it's stated?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, does that work with you?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else on the council have any questions? So then we would vote on the amendment, and then once we vote on the amendment, we'll vote on the final ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? No further discussion on the amendment? Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And any discussion on the entire item?
Do we need a motion to approve it? I move to approve the, this item as amended.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seen none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And with that, if I'm correct, it was four to two in favor of the change in the procedures of city council, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Please proceed with the next item.
Bill number 22-817, a resolution amending resolution number 6855 and removing section five from the resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to move to postpone this indefinitely.
Second?
I'd second that, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just a, just a comment that it's my understanding that we've reached an agreement, tentative agreement with bargaining unit on the memorandum of understanding to address this concern, and so it's not going to be needed. It's a good example of the bargaining units working with the city manager to address concerns that were, you know, were developed, and so, well done.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just one minor point of clarification. I'll be meeting with that bargaining unit's representative where this language falls in conflict with what the council adopted last month tomorrow, but this action would be pretty permanent, and as we're approaching open enrollment and want to make sure that that process runs very smoothly, we don't want to have whiplash of back and forth. So I have confidence in our ability to finalize a memorandum of understanding, but we've not yet met to finalize the agreement on that.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this passed, and Madam City Clerk, this basically tables this indefinitely. Yes. And this passed, and Madam City Clerk, this basically tables this indefinitely
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was twenty-two eight seventeen, was postponed indefinitely. That brings us to ordinances. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero eight-nine, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the twenty-four highway complete streets phase three project and increasing appropriations. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that means twenty-two zero eight-nine passes where the city manager can approve the cost-sharing agreement. Very good. Can you go to the next item, please?
Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-zero, an ordinance approving the cooperative agreement among the City of Independence, Missouri, the Nolan South Shopping Center Community Improvement District, and the Nolan South Development Company, LLP. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Please, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And twenty-two zero nine-zero passes. Please proceed to the next item.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-one, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental cooperative agreement among the City of Independence, Missouri, and the Inglewood Community Improvement District. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this approves twenty-two zero nine-one, the intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the City of Independence and Inglewood Community Improvement. So, very good. Thank you. Please go to the next item, please.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-two, an ordinance amending ordinance number one-nine-two-two-one by updating the necessary easement types and descriptions for parcel thirteen of the Raymond Hark List to Mills Project, project number one-three-one-eight-zero-six, in order to coordinate with necessary design changes. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. So twenty-two zero nine-two has also passed. Please go to the next item.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-three, an ordinance repealing resolutions number forty-five thirty, forty-eight twenty-two, forty-eight eighty-nine, forty-six ninety-one, forty-seven thirty-nine, sixty-three forty-three, and forty-nine fifty-six, creating the local tax oversight committee. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So let me make sure I understand this. We're going to re, we're going to get rid of, is it seven committees, and then we're going to create a new one, is that right?
Mr. City Manager, can you answer that one for me?
Your question was, are we eliminating?
Are we eliminating seven committees, and then we're getting, we're creating a new one? So essentially, we're going to get rid of six committees, is that right?
My understanding here is you're combining the stormwater oversight committee with the street improvement oversight committee. So, in effect, it eliminates a net one committee.
Oh, maybe I read it wrong. Okay. So there's nothing to do with the public safety committee in there?
No. Originally, that was discussed, but the direction we got from the council after further discussion at study sessions was to reduce this down to just the stormwater and street improvement oversight committees.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, when we went to the taxpayers to ask for revenue to take care of stormwater and streets, is there language in those that, that called for specific oversight by committees specific to stormwater, specific to streets?
If it would be okay with you, I asked for a legal opinion from the attorney on this, and I might defer to him. I think he's got more recent eyes on this.
Please proceed.
I can check again, but it is my recollection that, no, there's no language in the, that specifically sets up an oversight committee or anything like that, but I'm happy to double-check that.
Yeah, could you double-check that? Because here's the thing. We go to the voters, we ask them to, to increase taxes on themselves to take care of stormwater and streets, and in, in return, we say, but we're going to let you have oversight. So you're going to make sure that the trusted and precious tax dollars that you, you give to the city, that there's oversight through citizens, through taxpayers, to make sure that it's collected appropriately, it's spent properly, and that we're going to get done. I do not see the wisdom in reducing, whether it's twenty-one voices or fourteen voices, stand to seven. My question is, who's the seven going to be? Do we, do we have a plan on how we would even do that? The voices, the oversight committees. When you take away, we started with three committees, we're down to two, and we have now, rather than having fourteen sets of eyes on it, we have seven to oversee two committees.
According to section, I'm just reading the, the ordinance, according to section two, it says it's composed of seven individuals who are residents of the City of Independence, with each council member appointing one member of the committee.
Right. So, just so I'm clear, was there, was there a shortage of, of committee members? I mean, were we having difficulty filling those seats?
I'd have to defer to the city manager or the Mayor Protam. I'm not familiar with what the status of any of the committees were or where the, this kind of, the idea came from.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
I would like an answer, if I could, on those. Mr. Walker?
Certainly. I don't know about these specifically, Councilmember. I know with, so, as of June, when you all had that retreat back at the IUC, and this issue came up, we had thirty-eight different citizen boards and commissions. Now, of course, the mayor's advisory council on the arts has become a separate 501(c)(3), and the body voted to terminate the council transit committee a few weeks ago. But you added the FIFA and the NFL draft committee, so.
We'll talk about that later.
So, I believe over time, and Madam City Clerk, I don't remember the date, but the council did take some action to consolidate the number of seats on some of these advisory boards due to a lack of ability to fill those out. But I don't know that that was ever the case with any of the advisory committees. I think it was some of the other specialized or ad hoc committees that were set up.
I mean, with most of our boards and commissions, we ebb and flow with the applications that we receive and the ability to fill the vacant positions. So it's never a constant that we don't have enough applications, but there's a lot of times when we're looking to fill those positions, and I don't have applications to send the council members because these are individual council appointments.
Understood. I, well, I want my colleagues to know, I took the time and called several of the folks that sit on these committees and asked them their opinion. And I didn't get one that thought this was a good idea, not one. And I didn't talk to a hundred percent of them, but it was at least fifty percent of them. And they were opposed to having less oversight of our tax dollars rather than more. So, I don't know that this is an idea that, that really flies with the citizens, nor do I think that oversight should be reduced. And so, and my other question is, why do we have, if we're only eliminating two, reducing it down to one, why do we have so many numbers here? What are we doing with all these numbers? I think Councilman, Councilmember Stewart's question was, was a good one.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll take that one.
Okay.
So all of these numbers are the, the resolutions that were approved to create the oversights, the amendments that were approved as time went on to amend the oversight committees. But these specific resolutions are specifically to each, the storm and the street. And if you recall during the last study session or the study session before, when we were talking about this, and we removed the public safety tax away from it, all of those resolutions were also provided as attachments for reference. And those are the same, if you kind of compare those, those are the same resolutions that reference back to this title.
Okay, that makes sense. I appreciate that. Well, my question still is, who's going to be the seven? And I know that there's that process, but, so we just eliminate the fourteen and we start over with seven new ones, or they can all reapply, or, I mean, it's, if you've served on committees or you're going to a committee, I don't know that you would want one day to wake up and find out that your service is no longer available. So that's, but that's kind of what we're saying at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, how would this, how does this affect your office or your staff? Or does it?
The council approved the recommendation a few years ago to consolidate the water pollution control department with the Public Works Department into municipal services. So, the same staff people that are staffing both of those are now coming from the same department, though, you know, different individuals at times will, will respond to those. So, really, the efficiency that we will gain comes in the time of, you know, scheduling the meetings through the clerk and the, like, preparation of tonight, the semi-annual reports of the boards and commissions. That would have been done at one meeting instead of two separate meetings. So there, there is an administrative efficiency to be gained with that. Now, again, it's the clerk's process as far as generating applicants and appointments and all that, so we wouldn't have any, you know, net change on our office from that. But from an administrative standpoint, I do anticipate some efficiencies being gained there as a result of that.
One more question, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so if we combine these, there would then be, what, fourteen people on one bigger committee?
If, if that held, but I'd.
No, the way it reads right now, you are, it'd be seven people on this committee. So it would, there would be a new appointment of seven people.
We'd be starting over.
You'd be starting over. Now,
Okay.
Those seven people could, you all could choose, you know, set people from the existing pool of fourteen, but it eliminates two and creates a one combined one.
I would, thank you, Mr. Cover and Mr. Walker. Mr. Mayor, I think I would, if we're considering this, if we are going to pass it, I think, I don't think we should, should kick people off and start over. I would suggest that we make it to where it's just one bigger committee, and then as appointments, as spots come open, then we just wouldn't fill them until we're down to seven.
And?
And I'm saying that as a conversation piece.
Right.
As, as before I'm making it a motion.
And that's, I want to clarify with Mr. Cover on that, because that's a, an excellent question. Mr. Cover, you understand right now it's a seven, so if we were to amend this to fourteen and then through attrition get down to seven, we could do that, but we have to add that as an amendment on this in order to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. So, any, any further discussion before someone makes that amendment?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to make that amendment, so that existing folks all still stay on the, on, it would stay on the newly formed committee.
And then just through attrition on their scheduled cancellation and just take them as they come forward for the next seven, those next seven would be the ones that would be eliminated because of their, just their date of expiration on their term, if I'm hearing you correctly?
That's correct.
And Mr. Cover, would that work in your mind? Any legal concerns you have there? I know this is a tough one, to think off the top of your head on that one, and here, here we are about unintended consequences, so.
It, what you're saying makes sense. The only thing we would, you know, we'd have to reconcile is then with the terms, how that's going to work, because obviously, they're currently set up based on when they filled spots on those two existing committees. So we may need to do some, some, so yes, the concept makes sense and is doable. There may need to be some cleanup in the execution.
Are we, are we going to hear from you whether there was language in these two in terms of, of having their own specific oversight?
Yeah, as I said, I'm happy to check on that. I don't have access to the ballot language in, right now.
Yeah. Well, I think ballot language is real important before we make decisions like this. Just to verify, as part of the vetting, I think we should do that. I, I will not support anything that's not, if there was specific language in there for, for a committee to oversee these specific tax uses, then I think we owe it to the taxpayers to just make sure that we know.
I'm going to rule that the amendment fails on the basis of a second. And what we'll do is, I'd be entertaining a motion to table this to the next meeting and be concerned with that, because Councilmember Steinmeier makes an excellent point. We should have all of these items well-vetted before we proceed, and we have plenty of time on those to make the considerations. So, very, very good point. Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a motion to table this until the next council meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to table this to the next council meeting. And then, Mr. Cover, you'll have your work cut out for you to do that. Any further discussion on the tabling it? Madam City Clerk?
Just a question.
Please proceed.
Can we also investigate how it might work, having the fourteen members come together and how, make sure that there's not any unintended consequences as they trickle off?
Right.
And it gets down to seven?
Perfect.
Can we look at that?
Yeah, we can make that a part of the analysis also.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that brings us to first readings, if I'm correct?
Correct. Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-four, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements, general utility easements, and right-of-way for the Lynn Court and Nolan Road intersection alignment project, project number five-one-two-one-zero-one, authorizing the negotiation imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-five, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-two, General Commercial to District R-six, single-family residential for the property at one-three-two-two East US Twenty-four Highway in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-six, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-six, single-family residential to District C-two, General Commercial, for the rear of the property at one-three-zero-eight, one-three-one-zero, and one-three-one-two US Twenty-four Highway in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-seven, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District RA Residential Agricultural and District R-four, PUD, single-family low-density residential planned unit development to District RA Residential Agricultural for the property at two-six-three-one South Lobbe Cemetery Road in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-two dash zero nine-eight, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project authorizing the City of Independence, Missouri, to issue two series of taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a combined principal amount not to exceed fifty-five million dollars, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Okay. And that brings us to councilmember comments, if I'm correct. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins, maybe he took a pass. His glasses are still here, so maybe he'll be back. Councilmember, would you like to proceed?
I would. Just a question for the city manager. And we heard earlier about an Airbnb that's coming up on the, will come up in the future on the agenda. There are actually, as I've looked at the development schedule, there's actually a number of those coming up in the next few months. Plus, we have, since I've been on the council, I've heard, you know, comments about. Plus, we have, since I've been on the council, I've heard, you know, comments about Airbnb issues relative to gunfire and other issues that have occurred. And my understanding is that, I guess I have two questions, Mr. City Manager. One is, have you heard anything from any other neighboring jurisdictions that have been addressing the more prevalent use of Airbnbs and how to best handle some of those?
Right now, to best of my knowledge, most cities are operating off of the same codes, regulations, et cetera. This, I am aware that Kansas City, Missouri, is beginning to elevate this conversation because of the proliferation of the number of these that are starting to operate within the city and concerns about the impact that is having on neighborhoods where you create more of a transient population than you do those who have permanent homeownership or even long-term renters of a property, et cetera. Worried that that might begin to affect the fabric, character, and identity of the neighborhood. So they are on kind of the front end, I think, of exploring what kind of restrictions they could bring to bear. Maybe, you know, I think the idea would be to get some sort of a per capita cap or something like that. But I think they're on the front end of that research right now.
And so, and I've heard that maybe either Overland Park or Latha, one or the other, are, is spending some time addressing this as well, although I don't know that for sure. I guess my question would be, you know, this is going to only get more prevalent as opposed to less prevalent in the future, I think. Especially as we look, you know, as a metropolitan area, things like the World Cup and things of that nature. And that's going to be, you know, become more problematic. We heard issues about that tonight. I would like to ask you to have staff address this concern of the Airbnbs. And more than anything, is there a way, you know, if we've given an Airbnb a, you know, a license to do that, and we have, you know, more than one complaint or two complaints or more than one, you know, substantiated problem at those, that we can revoke that in a quick manner and be able to address that in a quick fashion? I just think that this is going to be, this is something that needs our attention, and so I'm going to ask staff to do that. The other comment I have, you know, just, just a general comment for the public that there's comments relative to the, the City Manager's review. And just to comment that it is never appropriate for us to address any personnel matters in an open meeting. And so I'm just making that comment as well.
Ms. Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. A couple Saturdays ago, we had a toast of the town gala, which was an excellent event. And what it is, it's sponsored by Truman Heartland Community Foundation. Annual Toast of the Town, they take cities in the eastern Jackson County area and they bring forth their Citizens of the Year, their Philanthropists of the Year, and so on and so forth. Two recognitions. One, City of Independence recognized Councilwoman Karen DeLucy as Citizen of the Year. So I was very proud to be there representing Independence for that, for all of her work that she has done. And it was a good event to be a part of. The second one, also at the same, same event, Truman Heartland Community Foundation, was the Heartland Humanitarians of the Year. And that went to Steve and Joan Israelite. And for you folks who haven't had the good pleasure of meeting Joan and Steve, they have put countless of time and hours into Inglewood and helping develop Inglewood into what we have here. And I have just a little bit of a bio on Joan and Steve. Both Joan and Steve are positive, energetic, insightful, and selfish, selfless, in their lifelong goal to, of betterment, of bettering the community, whether it be the impact of art, urban revitalization, empowerment through education or Jewish heritage. Steve and Joan are dedicated to helping others by giving themselves, promoting Inglewood Arts. It's a current project, and they have introduced countless people in their extensive network to Inglewood Arts and is a vision of a diverse and sustainable community in harmony with art. So that was really great to be a part of them, and a big thank you to Joan and Steve for that. So two weeks, almost two weeks prior to that, Inglewood Arts was, was a host to a pre-conference here. And, get my notes. The National Assembly of State Arts Agencies chose Kansas City for their annual convention this year. That was on a Friday. On the previous Thursday, Inglewood Arts hosted this pre-conference. And the buzz around our region, the buzz around our, our country about what is taking place here in Inglewood Arts really shown through, as many of you may or may not go to different conferences, it's really good just to be there on time at the conference, let alone do a pre-conference. So the pre-conference talked about what is Inglewood doing? How has it made its big steps to where it is and where it came from? And it was a great honor to be a part of the municipal discussion of how Independence would use our tools that we have in our toolbox to help facilitate development. And one of those which took a lot of great interest from different folks from parts of the country was our, our use of eminent domain. Because we would not have been able to be as successful without using that tool in our toolbox to bring eminent domain and our parties, different parties, to bear for discussion, to get development moving. So, two good things. Inglewood is up and moving, and everything is doing great over there, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Hobart, yes. That's what I was trying to, City Councilmember, I was trying to get that out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. One, thank you, Councilmember Perkins, for mentioning the award for Karen DeLucy. I, that, that, we didn't get to, we had a fast friendship, having only worked together for a year and some months. But I really, I really came to rely on her, and she, she did, in many ways, set the model for councilmember activity. So that was, that was pretty cool. Another thing I wanted to mention, a couple citizen speakers tonight were at least disagreed with us using eminent domain on the Kmart, which I like to refer to as Venture. And Mr. City Manager, if, Mr. Mayor, do you, if you'll allow me, I'd like to have an interaction with the City Manager.
All right.
Briefly.
Proceed, yep.
To be very clear, the Kmart building is not, was not eminent domained by the city. In order for that to have happened, the city council actually would have had to vote for that to happen.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, so there is no eminent domain. The city is not owed money or anything else to anybody on that Kmart. Is that correct?
I don't know if we have any outstanding, so contrary to what you heard tonight, when we do any kind of action on a property, we put a lien against that property. So if we have to mow it, if we have to knock a building down, something like that. And that's why I looked over to staff to confirm. And in fact, we do have a lien against that property for some of the previous remediation work that we had to do there.
Right. And so the property was bought by a private party at a tax sale. Is that correct?
I'm going to have the city attorney explain that.
Mr. Cover, thank you. Cover.
The, the property was acquired by a contractor that had been hired by the, the property owner as a result of a lien they had filed. They then foreclosed on that lien.
Okay.
And that, but that transaction is currently pending in Circuit Court.
Okay. So they did a levy sale to execute on their lien?
I'm not familiar with the logistics of it, but yes, they, they followed the proper process to execute on their lien and were able to acquire title. And the most recent property owner, who has owned it for a number of years, is contesting that and is taking legal action to stop that sale.
Okay. That's out of our hands.
Yes, sir, we are not a party to that. It has nothing to do with us.
We didn't fund it, and we didn't entice or somehow get involved with that third-party contractor?
Not to my knowledge.
No. No, we did not. The answer is no.
Okay. Now, Lynn Court, second thing I want to talk about, because it has been brought up a number of times. I know we voted on this a while back. It's a capital improvement project that was on the list. Lynn Court is right there by the old Showbiz, which is now the Custard Place. Andy's. I should know that. And right across from Hawaiian Brothers, which everybody knows how much I like that. So are we fixing, are we spending tax dollars on public, on, on private property in that capital improvement project?
So the capital improvement program that went to the Planning Commission and then the city council has in it for this year, so the five-year plan for this year to standardize that intersection and the signalization through there. So what that means is, because of some of the redevelopment investment that's happened in there, like you mentioned, Andy's and Hawaiian Brothers and even the hotel that's under the new ownership, the new QuickTrip, et cetera, there's far more congestion in that area than there was before, which is a good problem to have.
Yeah.
The project proposes reconfiguring the intersection and the signalization to help improve the traffic flow through that area. All on public property, all publicly owned assets, no private investment, public investment into private assets.
Wonderful. Thank you. One more point for me. I want to mirror what Councilmember Fierce said. In fact, it's not just Airbnbs. We, I have in my district a house that's part of this, some new company, where they rent out the individual bedrooms. And city staff has been working with me on that to sort of drill down into what that is. But there are creative and new alternative housing models that are getting used that we are not, even I wasn't aware of, we generally aren't aware of. And definitely would like city staff's help and everybody's help as a council. We do need to set some policy at some point, sooner than later, I think. That's it. Mr. Mayor, I won't take away your thunder for the Harry Truman appearing miraculously in the Capitol Rotunda.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. City Councilmember?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question, if I could. Mr. Cover, do you know who is representing the Texas owner on that property? Who, what law firm have they hired?
I do not know the answer to that.
Because I'd like to know. I've heard that they hired an outfit, a law firm in St. Louis that hired a law firm in Kansas City, one that we're all pretty familiar with, and I'd just like confirmation on that.
I can see what I can find out.
Yeah. And so if you, if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Couple of things. I, I, I'm curious. I, I spoke out at a city council meeting regarding the NFL draft, that I'd been speaking about it since 2019, when I heard about it. I was on the Parks Commission. And I did voice my frustration that in a city that needs all the revenue it can, that we haven't done a whole lot. We have, we've not made a lot of efforts with it. Tourism Committee's not talked about it. Parks tried numerous times, it always fell on deaf ears. We didn't get a whole lot out of it, until Thursday, September eighth. Mr. Walker, you sent out an email. I suppose you sent that out to all council members and the mayor, correct?
I did, yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and you just detailed, from 2020, the city staff had taken a look at it, and here's, here's the things that you came up with. And it was quite detailed, and you and I had a spirited discussion back and forth, as we normally do. And, and we came to the resolve that this is a thirty-one thousand dollar loser back then, in 2020. Now we have a few months to try to do something about it. And so in the mail, I got this letter that said that I've been appointed as chairperson to a committee that, and it's not that I'll back down from the challenge, but I'm looking at a thirty-one thousand dollar loser right out of the gate, according to city staff, city manager. And I, I'm not inclined to want to be set up to fail. But also, Mr. Walker, you sent this out to this performer, correct? To all the city council and the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So it detailed how we were, this is going to be a problem and getting into it. I called former Mayor Weir and talked to her, just to kind of review some of the, some of the contacts that she has and the things that she has working. And she told me, quite honestly, it's going to be a very difficult endeavor. And the city's going to have to spend money, bottom line. So I've been appointed this chairmanship, actually, I was appointed chair before there was a committee, but that's neither here nor there. I, I guess that's part of my frustration of speaking out. I guess I get this, this committee. But I think there's, there's some challenges in it, and I really don't want to be set up to fail. And I don't want our city to be set up to fail. And so I'm, I'm going to be returning this letter back to send her with some questions specific to what, how, how we envision doing something with the closing windows of opportunity, just a few months. And, I mean, we're going into two holiday seasons, and we have, Mr. Walker, you and I talked about knowing our competition, and we're, we're going to be going against a lot of people. And, and even former Mayor Weir said, it, it's going to be an uphill battle to do much of anything. So I, I'm, I'm going to send, return this to send her with a request for a meeting to find out what my budget is, how we're going to do this, and how we put it on a fast track. Because I just don't know how I'm going to be set up to succeed, or the city's going to be set up to succeed in the midst of all this. So I'm hesitant to say again that revenue is what we need in this city. And I will continue to say, as I have for the last two years, we, if we are serious about revenue and what's owed to the city that we need to go after and start looking at and an aggressive stance on the Bass Pro Tiff, that super tip, Cracker Net Creek, I'll probably become chair before there's a committee to do so. But I think we have the framework right here. And it was, it was brought to us in 2013, a framework of how to collect that. And I still think that this is a huge issue for our city. It certainly is in my district, and I'd like some attention on it. And I'm hoping that in the midst of the discussion, that we can have an honest discussion of how we're going to go after ninety million dollars that's owed to us. Like I said, there is a plan in place to do so, and I'd like to see us do so. We have lots of work to do catching our public safety up with firefighters needing trucks. We need more staff, we need more buildings, facilities, all these things. There's, there's money here, and I just want to say, I will serve you. I will serve you in the third district, I'll serve my city in any way, shape, or form, and capacity to, to benefit the image of our city, the revenues of our city. I will do all I can. And I just want to leave you with one thing, that a president said that I like. And he said, either you will control your government, or government will control you. And so I'm just here to say, you control me, you're, I work for you. And I'm hoping that we do a better job in, in regaining lost ground. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
If I could, real quick, I do have an answer to Councilmember Steinmeier's previous question. The, the property owner out of Texas is represented by Derek Albers and Scott Weasel. Both of them are with the Louis Rice, Rice Law Firm.
In St. Louis or Kansas?
Louis Rice. Mr. Albers is out of St. Louis. Mr. Weasel or Weasel is out of Kansas City.
What law firm is he with?
They're both with Louis Rice. Yeah, two different offices of Louis Rice.
I had heard, I had heard through the private sector that Spencer Fain was involved in. I just wondered if I could check that out.
They don't represent the property owner, no.
Excuse me. Last Thursday was a remarkable event for Independence. There are only one hundred statues put in the US Capitol recognizing extraordinary individuals. And last Thursday, we were lucky enough to have one of our hometown heroes recognized in the Capitol as one of those rare one hundred people. And it was extraordinary to be there, to see that event. And my wife and I paid for it out of our own dollars. We did not ask the city to pay for that because I didn't think that was appropriate. But it was just so important to be there, to represent our city, and to see the extraordinary event that occurred. And I will tell you, President Truman, his statue, has an extraordinary piece of real estate. And he is right there when they have meetings inside the rotunda. And it is a great piece of, a great piece of property to be right there. I mean, they were very, very kind to him. And they moved out Mr. Hamilton, if I'm correct, for that. So, Mr. Hamilton got moved down a hallway, and he is, President Truman is right next to President Grant and President Abraham Lincoln. So, pretty extraordinary. So, with that being said, also, this Saturday, anybody have some free time on this Saturday? Because this Saturday, big day, on October the eighth, we're going to clean up the park at Rotary Park. We recommend you bring some gloves, bring some bags, but if we need bags or gloves, we'll do that. You can get pickers, and I just like the term "pickers." Is that just a great term? I mean, I want to get, I want to see one of these pickers. I haven't seen one yet. Looking forward to that. Get the pickers, but we're going to clean up the park. And we would love for everyone here, especially those people that have incredibly vocal tonight and sharing their enthusiasm for our city, to also be there. I would love to see you there. And to have that opportunity to clean up our park. So, with that being said, I welcome all of you there, October eighth. And let's think about Harry Truman and the extraordinary event that occurred last week. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.